Obviously for most of you on council, we've known you for a long time. We appreciate the ability to continue to be here with you. If you recall going back into late last calendar year, we had a somewhat lengthier work session and talked through the various options and ways to think about funding. As the manager mentioned, your constrained capital improvement program. I think what you see here tonight is hopefully a little bit skinnier book on purpose because we've worked through a lot of this. And we'll purposely try to get right to the point, but again, it ties right into the recommended budget and the plan going forward for your middle school and for the rest of your capital projects. To get that all enacted, obviously with your blessing and approval over the next couple of months. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions as we walk through this. And I'll get to the councilwoman's question here as we get to the cash flows as well. But again, as the manager mentioned here on page number one, you've identified, you're obviously making city council, working with the school board and your staff, roughly 23 million in capital projects. And so that's what we've been working with, trying to determine how is it we're going to finance that within both your financial policy constraints, within your financial constraints, meaning how are we going to pay for this cash flow wise? And so what you'll see tonight is how indeed we do that and ultimately the path forward to get that first piece of financing in place. So you can move forward with the first tranche of things. Critical in that, in that plan, and I'm looking at the third bullet here, is the concept that the real estate tax rate is going to go up by six pennies in order to fund and finance the payments on this capital program. And I think that the council one brings up an interesting question and a good question, which is why would we do that all upfront as opposed to maybe phasing it in over time? And I think one critical factor in that is that in order to finance that roughly 23 million over two different phases, we'll need to go out to the credit markets. And basically finance that through the city issuing bonds. And that'll require a process to go talk to the rating agencies and have them kind of bless the plan of finance and the process underlying the city and the overall process of financing it. So what's going to put you in the best possible position to go out and raise what is a pretty large amount of money for a city the size of Pecosin? Is to be able to say to, again, those rating agencies and lenders that, hey, we've got our revenue stream to pay for this set ahead of time. We know what that is. And that's going to give them the greatest amount of comfort that you're going to be able to cash flow that plan over time. So I think that's probably the first and most critical reason you want to do this upfront. The city and other cities and other local governments in the past, will at times maybe look to a sort of staged approach to doing that. I think the problem per se maybe with doing that at times is the follow through. You know, the budget is enacted annually. It's enacted by the council that's in place at the time the budget's, you know, adopted. And so from a credit markets and a lender sort of outside view, it's going to carry much more weight if the council is, I mean, the council and the city is blessing the full sort of revenue stream to make sure we can repay all this financing by the time we actually obtain the financing. So hopefully that's helpful in terms of answering that.
Kyle, if I could.
Yes.
But there was also a balance that it brought. In other words, if you phased it out over time, it actually ended up costing you.
Yeah, that's a very good point. The way, the way the cash flows work, and that's an excellent point, Mr. Mayor. By virtue of doing six sets upfront, it actually results in a smaller total real estate impact, meaning total tax impact than if we tried to do it in little pieces. And that's because we get the benefit upfront of that full six pennies and we're able to kind of have that grow over time upfront. As opposed to trying to kind of do little bits and pieces here and there, which ultimately ends up costing more in terms of the tax equivalent impact.
I was just going to maybe amplify the mayor's point. He beat me to part one of my point. But as you walk through your presentation and look at some of the underlying financials, the debt service, again, as I said a few minutes ago, if we didn't do anything at all, the CCIP, the note on the EDA property is going to bring it a one cent. And when you layer that into your existing debt curve. you layer that into your existing debt curve, and then you take on, what we're proposing anyway, is the first 18 million, you can't, you're going to need an increase more than one penny to pay debt service on 18 million, just doing simple math.
That's right.
In addition to the other. So when Kyle walks through his charts, I think you'll see how it works. I'll think mathematically, you'll see the figures that walk through what I call taking the top off the mountain in terms of using, building a reserve and then using it over time so that six never gets to seven for this. So I believe those charts will illustrate your point.
Yep. And that really gets to the two concepts on the bottom of the page here, debt affordability and debt capacity. So what we're really talking about, Randy, is the debt affordability side of things, meaning how do we pay this cash flow wise within the budget? The debt capacity side of things is how do we make sure that our debt ratios and our debt policies stay within what the rating agencies expect of us? So if you flip to page two, we've kind of alluded to this a couple of times. The plan of finance for this, to use that term, is really what we call a two-phase one, whereby in phase one, we'll be borrowing roughly 18 million. I use that term roughly. That's basically the middle school and a couple of the projects that the city manager mentioned, between the bus and the HVAC, et cetera. And the idea is to make sure those monies are locked up in the relatively near term. That's important both cash flow wise and interest rate wise to kind of get the plan, get it rolling, so to speak. That'll be done with a financing repaid over 20 years. Importantly, within that financing, we have the ability to pay off certain projects faster. So for instance, the school bus that is within that plan won't be amortized over 20 years. That'll be amortized over a quicker time period. The school will be amortized over a 20-year time period. So as you're thinking about maybe the mix of projects that's within there, the aggregate financing will be 20 years or thereabouts in length. But within that, the individual projects are sort of custom tailored so that they're paid off in accordance with their useful life. Obviously, a school bus is, you know, you could probably keep it running for 20 years, but it's not best practice to finance it for 20 years, certainly. We've planned on an interest rate within our cash flows of four and a half percent. I'll tell you, if we were to go out and do this tomorrow, that rate would be much lower than that, probably in the threes. And so what you'll see in here is a time schedule that moves this forward as reasonably quickly as we can, with the hope, not necessarily the guarantee certainly, but the hope that we can lock in rates while they're continually favorable, which they happen to be right now. So we've planned on that 450 rate, that hopefully is a conservative rate. And again, we're going to try and move this with your blessing forward as reasonably quickly as we can. We'll talk about how exactly we do that in a couple pages. The second phase of this would be roughly $5 million in a year to two years, depending on exactly the timing of the projects. I think there's a couple of reasons we want to do that. Number one, especially in your middle school project, the ultimate sort of final cost of that isn't necessarily known. It's a project that'll take multiple years to complete. And so by virtue of staging the funding in two different stages, it gives us the ability to time the second financing to coincide with really when we need that funding, as well as be able to make any tweaks that maybe are needed to the size of the financing based on how the project goes and what the ultimate project cost is. So that's kind of the reason, one of the reasons that's broken out in two different phases there. You can see within the planning, we've planned on the same roughly 20-year amortization at a planning rate of about 475. So we bumped that up a little bit for the second tranche. Obviously, we don't know exactly what rates are going to be. I think that sort of goes without saying. But the hope is these are conservative interest rates from a planning perspective. So two phases there, roughly 18 million you'll be seeing in the coming months, and then roughly 5 million that'll be a year plus out. If you flip to page three, we'll talk a little bit, these two pages, three and four, speak to the debt capacity side of things. So we've got our two concepts. One is debt capacity. How do we make sure that we're complying with our financial policies? How do we make sure that we're complying with what the rating agencies expect of us as a AAA/AA rated cities? And so the first of those two really critical policies is debt service versus expenditures, which is basically what proportion of our budget, or if you want to think about it, how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget go to paying debt service? What you see in the top left there, there's a lot of information on this page, but the top left graph is probably the clearest thing, at least to me, to look at to give you the sense of things. The dark green bars are what you have in place right now. So if you didn't do anything else, no new projects and no new debt, your dark green bars are what's on the books right now. And what we'll be adding are those lighter green bars and sort of phasing those in as the two financings come online. And simply stated, what we want to make sure of as we're doing all this is those green bars don't go above that red line. That red line is 10%, which means that our policy is to have no more than 10% of the budget going towards debt service payments. And what you see here is we increase over the next three years from roughly, we'll call a little bit below 8%, but we keep it below 10% there. And then there's a nice sort of gradual decline thereafter, beginning in 2022, as that second financing kind of ramps up and rolls off. So I think what you see is an ability to comply with your financial policies, of your various financial policies. This is a very important one because it deals with your annual cash flows and your annual financial flexibility within the budget. And like one other point on this page and on the next page, which is if you look at the bottom left there, we've just kind of highlighted little snapshots of the rating agency criteria and how they view these different ratios. I think for your purposes this evening, just want to make sure it's clear that the little snapshots there are just a portion of what they use to come up with a credit rating for a city like Pecosin. So where we highlight there, that strong ratio, we would indeed be within that strong ratio. But ultimately, when the rating agencies are coming up with their credit rating, they're using a variety of factors that we've talked about in the past, critically being the economy, finances, debt, and lastly, management. And so as we're looking at this policies, we just wanted to give you a snapshot this evening, but it's just a portion of what the rating agencies are using to come up with our credit rating. As you flip the page to page four, again, similar looking graph, this is a different ratio, another one of your financial policies, which is debt versus assessed value. Similar concept, we want to make sure those green bars stay below that red line. And simply stated, if our policy is at 3%, we end up, by virtue of this plan, over the next couple of years, being a little bit above 2.5% and then falling back off there thereafter. So we've got a little bit of daylight between the policy and where we expect to be, which is a good thing, just in case, again, you have an emergency, a storm or something that requires you having a little bit of contingency in there. But ultimately, what we're doing is making sure we've complied with that policy and have a little bit of, have a little bit of cushion, to use that term, therein. And again, similar concept on the bottom left there, we should look at those ratios, that term moderate, in the A range, that just happens to be where the rating agencies sort of view that particular ratio at that level. That does not mean per se that we expect you to be in the A range rating. We don't. We expect you to be much higher than that as we know you're AAA and AA. So we don't necessarily expect a change to that, and just wanted to highlight that little clarification as you're looking at that page. With that, I may skip over, just because of the city manager's comments and the earlier question, we're going to come back to the schedule. But we'll just hit on the cash flows. Tanya, if you don't mind, page 10. We'll just do this very briefly. There's a lot of numbers here. It's going to be hard to see on the screen, maybe harder, easier to see, obviously, in the paper in front of you. But I think to the mayor and the managers' point earlier that ultimately, by virtue of doing the six pennies now, it's less of an impact to your tax rate than if we spread it over time. And so we won't walk through the cash flows per se here, but they're all contained on this page and on the following page. And the concept is really that by virtue of doing the six pennies today, we're going to be able to make a deposit into a capital reserve fund, which is something the city's used in the past, and something many of your neighbors have used. And that capital reserve fund is going to allow us to kind of almost supercharge, so to speak, the impact of that initial tax rate, and use some of those dollars to make sure that we don't need any future pennies to support this capital program. And so again, maybe just to further make that point, that's really what is sort of going on on this page and on the following page, in that we're going to be able to take some of those six pennies just in the first year and use that to help shave some peaks in debt service in the later years. And that's going to mean that we don't need future tax impact to make this whole program work. So with that, Tanya, I may just back up to page number five. Maybe I'll pause here and just see if there's any questions at this point, on maybe the numbers, and I'll walk you through the timeline and the schedule going forward.
Any questions? Any questions of anybody at this point? I think we've seen, we've gotten a great presentation before this, so thank you. But go ahead and go through your next steps.
Yes, sir. Well, on page five, last page, and then we'll get out of your hair. But basically where we head from here, as you know, you're introducing your budget tonight. The plan really is, over the course of the next couple of months, as you approve your budget on May 14th, we'll then be in a position to move very quickly to get the financing in place. We expect this financing will be done similar to how the city's financing's been done in the past, meaning even as early as last year, we issued bonds in the public credit markets, which continue to be very favorable, especially for this size and your credit rating. So very similar process to what we've used in the past. And so what that's going to entail is a discussion with the credit rating agencies, who are very much up to speed with your finances and where you're headed. This project won't be a surprise to them. We've talked about that, the project with them in the past. And so in early June, we'll go talk to them. Mid-June, we'll get the results back from those discussions. And we'd expect sometime in the June, maybe early July time period, we could be in the credit markets. And that's really the critical time. The interest rate is set on the bond issue. It'll be a fixed rate loan, and that's the time period we'll know precisely what that interest rate is. I think one last point for you, doesn't necessarily contain on the schedule, but as you think about your next couple of months, we will need to do a public hearing for the new money side of things. You'll probably see us and maybe your bond council at least one more time before we actually go out to the market and sell those bonds. With that, we'll have funding in place, obviously with your blessing, by the end of July. And we just put it on there as a placeholder. Then again, phase two will likely be sometime in fiscal year 2020. So, you know, a year plus out, we may be talking about that second phase. But obviously, we'll get the first phase sort of in the door and over the finish line before we move to that stage.
One clarification. When we go up to see the bond rating, the national credit rating agencies, we're going to discuss the entire program.
That's right.
So it's very possible we won't have to revisit by 2020.
Yeah. And in fact, our expectation at this point would be this one rating visit would kind of cover both financings.
Okay. Any questions? Then Randy, you want to?
I have another council question.
Anybody got any questions for Davenport? Did you get, did you get your answer that you were looking for? All right.
Just a couple of points, three. We've been laying the groundwork for this middle school project, even though we didn't know exactly what form it would take and what it would cost for at least two bond rating cycles. We have talked about the importance of this project. It's, I think, the term that David Rose uses, it's kind of a legacy project, meaning that it's not one that happens every day. We're not Loudoun County. You know, we're building, you know, a half a dozen schools a year. We may build one a generation. And so given our relatively small size, this type of curve, debt curve, is to be expected. And so I just want you to know that we have, we have been talking to them about this for years. So this will not be the first time they heard it. One question that I get sometimes is why even go get a credit rating? In order to sell debt, you need to have a bond rating, sort of like your individual credit score. And if you're going to go buy a car, they're going to want to know what your, what your credit score is. And depending on what your credit score is, that may well impact the interest rate you get on the bond. So the higher our credit rate, ultimately the lower our bond interest rate and a lower our cost. As Kyle said before, if we sold the bonds tomorrow, it would be somewhat less than the 4.5% conservative interest rate. We're trying to get that as low as possible. When you're borrowing in the millions, a tenth of a percentage point can be significant. Lastly, one of the things, and Kyle touched on some of the reasons that we've put forward to do it in two pieces, an additional piece, well, two really, one is there, in our proposal, there is no borrowing half the money for something. So the middle school, which is the cornerstone of the first borrowing phase, is fully funded. So it doesn't, you don't create a situation in which 18 months from now, for whatever reason, we're unable to move forward to fund the other half of a middle school project. Kyle mentioned that the exact costs of that project are unknown. So one of the things the school board has done, and is prioritization of the $20 million, is they purposely layered their additional projects to hold them back a little bit because the middle school is their priority. If they have to make adjustments to the other projects to stay with what they're trying to do, they can do that. And lastly, on our side, you see the TMDL line. All council is fully aware of what this unfunded federal mandate is. You're also aware that the mandate itself, the nature of the commitment on local governments, is changing. The SWIFT project at HRSD holds the promise to satisfy the localities, nitrogen and phosphorus requirements, and at least make some headway into sediment. Should that come all the way through and get all of the approvals, the nature of that unfunded mandate may be substantially different and substantially less. So the, by waiting a year, we should have answers to all of those questions. And if they are in the affirmative, meaning that the cost of the mandate has gone down, then we'll be in a position to work with you and the planning commission to prioritize the remaining aspects of the $3 million conceptually set aside by you in your retreat discussions. If it goes the other way, we're in a position to use the balance of that borrowing to do about 70% -- I'm doing this math in my head, so it might be a little off -- about 70% of our five-year mandate. It's not enough to do it all. There's another million on the other side of it. But it is definitely enough to get us, to get us where we need to be. So a year from now, we'll know a lot more. We'll know a lot more about what the school will cost. We'll know a lot more about TMDL. And we'll also have the benefit of knowing what our interest rate is, so that we can have a more mature financial plan as we, as we move into phase two.
Okay. I think there's one, there's one question that just about everybody will want to know. And Randy, I'd ask you to kind of address it. And this goes back to the budget really not so much. So when we talk about a tax increase of seven cents, what does that mean to the average homeowner?
Mr. Mayor, in case you need to refer to it later, you'll find that answer on Roman numeral four as the last page of the budget message. But what it says is, for the average taxpayer, meaning the average value of a home, the average value of a home in Pecosin is $322,800. So the proposed tax increase, if approved as presented, would have a net positive, meaning more, tax cost of $226 per year for the average taxpayer. positive, meaning more, tax cost of $226 per year for the average taxpayer. If you take that as part of a monthly bill, if you amortize it over the year, it would be $18.83 per month for the average taxpayer.
Okay. About rounding up, $20 a month is what we're talking about for the average taxpayer?
Yes, sir.
Increase in real estate. Okay. Obviously, if you own more or you own less, that that's correct.
And that's inclusive of the capital plan we just discussed, and also the tax, one cent tax increase recommended to support the SRO and the work of the school safety committee that you approved at your last meeting.
Okay. All right. I just think that's something that the citizens, they can get lost in the numbers here. And I just wanted to make sure everybody upfront knew what we were talking about for the average citizen. So, okay, so good data, good presentation. Does anybody have any questions? No, we've been talking about. We're probably, as a council, more comfortable, because we've been talking about this for a while. And Kyle, as you said, I think the last couple of times we've been up to the rating agencies, we told them we were coming back for the middle school. I don't know if we'll get the same people, but they'll probably remember what we said then.
Absolutely.
The one great thing is that we have stuck to the plan that we've always presented to them. So they should see us as being good for our word and coming back when we basically said we'd be coming back for. So I think it'll be a good news story up there, but something that is key. And that's the week of June 4th, assuming we get through the budget. So anybody else have anything before we close out? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight, Kyle.
Well done.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to leave the tables up, leaving here in the corner. So to check them down, see.